At Premier Heating and Air, we wake up every day with one goal in mind, and that's serving Middle Georgia with the fastest, friendliest service available. Experience a Premier difference. Do you need faster response getting your AC fixed or replaced? Then call Premier. Since 2001, Premier has been providing the fastest response on incredible AC, indoor air quality, and commercial services. Our work ethic and service has been the key to our success. The difference is clear. Call Premier. Now breathe easy with perfectly time-saving on a new AC system. Free estimate and up to $2,000 in rebates. So you'll beat the heat in total comfort all summer long. Log on to dublin-premierishere.com. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company. Offer ends June 30th, 2023.
This June 20th, 2023, the city council is hereby called to order. I'd ask for Councilman Colby to provide the invocation. After the invocation, please remain standing for the pledge of the flag. Councilman Colby?
Well, we just thank you for the opportunity to gather today and to be able to take care of what you've gifted us with, to take care of the city. We thank you for our staff and our employees and for giving us wisdom today as we make decisions in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And give us traveler mercies.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Our council meeting was moved to 11:30 this morning because we have a Georgia Municipal Association Convention that runs from tomorrow morning through Monday, and we have a lot of council members who are through Tuesday. And we have a lot of council members who are not going to be here this evening as they'll be traveling down to Savannah for that training, those training sessions. This time, we are going to move to the first item on our agenda.
Got to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Add the, um, selling of the grinder to the...
Item number 10.
To the, to the, what is that? Waste?
Solid waste management.
Solid waste, I can't read my own handwriting, I'm sorry. Solid waste management. Authorize the city manager to sell that to the...
All right. So we have a motion to add an item to the agenda for the sale of a grinder to the solid waste management authority. We have a second on that motion.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Mascara. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We'll add as a new action item number 10, the sale of a grinder. We'll now move to item number one on the agenda, which is the approval of the June 6 city council meeting minutes. Do you have those meeting minutes in your packet? Are there any suggestions for changes or amendments?
Heather, did you get those, the couple of items that I emailed? You, I emailed you a couple of things, so there were two yesterday. Two of the students had incorrect information.
Okay. I can write this.
But it's, it's, it's just a grade on there. So it's very simple.
Okay.
All right. So we have a, we'll have minor amendments just to correct some personal information on the students who attended the international trip. Other than that, any other changes or corrections? If not, do we have a motion?
I should approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two, approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
The council has a copy of all the bills in your packets.
Any questions regarding those bills? If not, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
Uh, we have one purchase for council's consideration. This is for traffic calming for cycle three and a review of cycle two implementation. These are materials and supplies needed to execute those recommendations from staff. And the total purchase expenditure is $74,726.38. As the council knows, we allocate $150,000 in discretionary funds each year for traffic calming, and so this is well within that, that budget. But this is to, the roads that were included in cycle three for evaluation were Dunwoody, Camellia, East Mary, Rowe, Flanders, Pinehurst Drive, Ancourt, Brookdale, Pinewood, Cardinal, Edgewood, and Live Oak Subdivision. And also Garner, uh, East Garner Street was added as well. Um, and there's a breakdown of the purchases by the vendor in your materials, and we ask that you approve that purchase.
All right. So this, yeah, this is the only purchase over $15,000. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? I know we discussed it extensively in pre-council. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones with a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to re-adopt the GMEB's defined benefit retirement plan. Mr. Powell?
This is ordinance number 2405, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to re-adopt the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System, or GMEB's, defined benefit retirement plan.
Okay. Um, at this time, we will close our city council meeting and open a public hearing for receiving public comments regarding this proposed ordinance. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the re-adoption of the GMEB's defined benefit retirement plan? This is not exactly a hot-button issue for the city of Dublin right now. All right. So there's no one who wants to speak regarding this issue. We'll close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones with a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Again, this, just for the public's benefit, we have a retirement plan for our employees. The law requires that we re-adopt that retirement plan each year. This year, there are very, only very minor changes to that retirement plan, nothing substantial or that really required any kind of deep dive or policy decisions, are very minor changes. So this is for re-adopting it. Um, and at this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Mascara?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, which is discussion and action on engaging an accounting firm for our FY '24 audit. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2427, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin authorizing the execution of an engagement letter with Nicholas Colley and Associates, LLC for professional auditing services for the FY '24 audit, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. The total estimated cost of their services, this upcoming audit, is $60,250. And staff asked that council approve the resolution so we can engage with Nicholas Colley.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Smith. Uh, I just, as part of discussion on this, I just want to point out that Nicholas Colley has done the city's audits for many years. Um, our city treasurer, Mr. Daniels, was asked regarding their level of service and how he feels about it, and he said that they've done a great job, appreciate the work that they've done. This is slightly over budget, but only by a very minimal amount. Uh, the prices went up just a little bit, and the firm has a lot of historical knowledge about the city's financial practices. Uh, with that background, which is what we discussed in pre-council, are there any other comments or discussion on this motion? All right. If not, then all those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Century 21 Durden Corrigan is here to help buying or selling a home convenient and as simple as possible. Call on Agents Brian Howell, Charlene Lamp, Adam White, David Deves, Jennifer Bradley, Mark Bateman, Kim Thompson, Pamela Lee, Edie Webb, Jay Brantley, Jim Jarrett, Reina Dufferley, Yvonne Robertson, or broker George Durden. Century 21 Durden Corrigan Realty has been helping people just like you buy and sell a home in the Dublin area for generations. Our local knowledge and negotiation skills can guide you on the path to your dreams. Century 21 Durden Corrigan. Call 478-272-1535. Stop by our office on Veterans Boulevard or log on to c21dublin.com. That's Four Seasons.
We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is a resolution to reduce speed on certain city streets. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2428, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to reduce the maximum speed limit on certain streets within the corporate limits of the city of Dublin to authorize enforcement, to provide for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Um, and just for the public's knowledge, these streets that I'll name, the current speed limit is 35 miles an hour by city ordinance, and this act by the mayor and council, after a traffic study has been conducted, will reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, and that's Mary Street, Rowe Street, Flanders Street, Pinehurst Drive, Pinehurst Court, and Brookdale Drive. This is a part of our traffic calming measures, and I want to thank city staff for the work on this and adding these streets and evaluating them, as has been requested by the mayor and council and the public.
All right. So we have this resolution to reduce the speed. Uh, do we have any questions for staff?
Is that reducing the speed is going to be on East and West Mary on both sides, the reducing the speed?
It'll be the entire length of Mary Street from Claxton Dairy to Parker Dairy Road. Yes.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for staff regarding this? All right. And, no, this, not this time. You can, you can have time at citizens' comments. So just for the, um, just for background on this, the, our city planner and our engineering department conducted speed studies on each of the streets to determine what the volume of traffic on each of these streets were and what speeds those cars were going. The city planner produced a report related to each street. That report had recommendations that included things such as speed cushions and reducing speeds, as well as other methods such as striping and posting signage. So this is, appreciate the work that the city planner and the city engineer have done to evaluate each of these streets and to recommend these, um, these methods for improving it. At this point, we are looking at, these are the new ones?
What you just approved.
Okay. So what, um, this would be, would be lowering the speed limits on six additional streets and implementing 29 speed cushions on 14 additional streets. Uh, so that's, I think it's making a difference for our neighborhoods. Do we have a motion at this time?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby with a second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll next move to item number seven on the agenda, which is a proposal for landscaping and grounds maintenance services for city parks. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2429. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve the award of a contract for the maintenance of city parks to Dixie Lawn and Landscaping Incorporated to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement for said services to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We solicited proposals that staff have evaluated, and we received a number of proposals from various companies in the community for park maintenance, and Dixie Lawn and Landscaping scored the highest and is recommended by staff to be awarded. The total annual cost, um, based on their proposal, is $300,024, and we had $375,000 budgeted for this purpose, and the buffer there will give us some additional funding and make that available for any additional services that we may need throughout the year in these parks. Uh, that's outside of the scope of the, the contract and what they proposed on. Um, and we are, this will start effective July 1st as we take over maintenance of city parks.
All right. Uh, any questions for staff regarding this? I know that we appreciate the committee that served to evaluate the bids, appreciate Mr. Jefferson for providing some background information at pre-council on that process and how the various companies scored. Um, as Mr. Powell said, the city of Dublin will be taking over the maintenance of city parks on July 1st, so we're getting this contract in place so that we can make sure that the parks are well maintained and there won't be a gap in service. Uh, do we have a motion?
Would this be bided out annually?
This is, um, it was bid out as a one-year contract with an option for three one-year renewals. So the council will have discretion to, to do that if we want to, you know, depending on the level of service, if there's some dissatisfaction with Dixie, we can definitely have that option at the end of the first year.
Any other questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll next move to item number eight on the agenda, which is approval of the UGA archway agreement. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2430, um, resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council approving a memorandum of understanding with Lawrence County and the University System of Georgia by and on behalf of the University of Georgia and the Office of the Vice President for Public Service and Outreach for the development, implementation, and continuation of the Dublin-Lawrence County Archway Partnership to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Um, this is something that the Economic Development Authority has been working on for a number of years to get an archway program started in our community. It will essentially provide all of UGA's colleges and the expertise that may come from that through their staff and through the student body, um, to provide both an opportunity for students to work on real-life, real-world situations that our, our local community is facing, um, and help us with addressing whatever those needs may be. There'll be a local committee that is formed that may be made up of elected, appointed, or citizens in the community with an interest in the furtherance of our community, and we'll be able to identify local issues that we want the college to help us with, UGA's. A staff member will be stationed here in Dublin-Lawrence County, um, and part of this agreement is that the city and the county are splitting the cost of that staff member to be stationed here. Um, UGA will cover the cost of their materials and supplies and all of that, and the Development Authority is going to be providing an office space for the individual, and they are already working on that. But this will, we'll be able to identify through our local committee and the, and the staff member that's here, any issues or, or problems that we might want to address and face that the community identifies or that we identify, and they'll be able to tap into the resources that are available through each of the colleges on UGA's campus to provide resources for us to answer those questions and provide us with recommendations.
All right. And just by way of example, um, in other towns, I'll just give you one example, there was an intersection with five streets coming into an intersection, and rather than having to go through a consulting with a outside engineering firm, they pushed that project through to the, the archway partnership, and engineering students at the University of Georgia helped propose a redesign of the intersection under the guidance of their, you know, their teachers, and then it went back to the city's engineering department, was able to be implemented. It ended up saving the town a whole lot of money because they were able to, to do that through the University of Georgia. Um, and I think other examples include students working on, on creating a geographic information system file of the stormwater systems within a particular town, getting those mapped out. I think they gave us a lot of examples that related to sort of engineering and infrastructure, and I understand that our city engineers said that this could be a helpful partnership. Uh, do we have any questions or comments related to this issue? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Godfrey.
Councils.
Oh, excuse me, Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, boys. If you want to go to college, you have to clear out another one of these. What if we told you there was a better way to save for your kid's college than pickle jars? Morris Bank Savings Builder Account and MULA makes saving for your kid's college easier than ever. All you have to do is connect the account to your debit card, where it automatically rounds up your purchases to the nearest dollar, depositing that spare change into a MULA account, where it will grow into a nice little nest egg for whatever your kids have their sights set on.
I'm Heath Richster, and we just want to invite everybody to come on down to the Houston Clinic and check us out at our new facility. Uh, we've been in Dublin for a while now, obviously, but have, have a new office here, and we'd just like you to come down and see some of the new stuff we're offering, and if you need to get checked out, we'd be glad to do that for you. Got to, able to do some ultrasound-guided injections now and physical therapy and just a little bit better space, so hopefully we can get you in and out of here a little bit quicker.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
We'll next move to item number nine on the agenda, which is the purchase of property on Madison Street.
This is Resolution 2431, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to approve the purchase of tax parcels D20A 030 and D20A 028A, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Um, we have been looking for a while for a location for our street department to be relocated to. They are currently located down on South Washington Street, just adjacent to Riverview Golf Course and down by the Roscoe Brower Fields and Park area. And, um, so this is a parcel that we've looked at and have identified as being inappropriate for our needs. Um, and so we've negotiated the purchase of the property. It's $550,000 for, um, this is a piece of property on, on Madison Street, um, and it's got a warehouse facility on it already that we can renovate to, to make use for our street department. Um, and then there's a small triangle piece that also connects up to some other city property that is also a part of this purchase, which is right there highlighted on the screen. Um, and as you can see, our groundwater plant is there, adjacent to this, and so the city will have, um, some, some consistency there in, on Madison Street on the properties that we own all the way up to the river. So our staff is recommending that the council approve this purchase, and we will negotiate and get a final closing on the, on the properties as soon as possible.
All right. We've discussed this previously at a prior meeting. Do we have any questions at this time?
No.
No questions? So...
Excite me.
Yeah. This is the first step in relocating the street department out of that neighborhood back there next to Roscoe Brower Park, and with the amount of large trucks that are coming in and out of that neighborhood environment, it's just more appropriate for this to be more in a, more in this zone rather than a neighborhood zone. And I know that's been a long time coming, and it's still going to take several years, but this is the first step towards that. Uh, do we have any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, if there is no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right.
The grinder.
We'll now go to the added action item number 10, which is authorizing the city manager to sell a used city of Dublin grinding machine to the Solid Waste Management Authority. Mr. Powell?
Um, the Solid Waste Management Authority has had a grinder on its campus for a while now, that, for several years actually, that they've been using that's belonged to the city. Um, and I went to Michael Snipes, who's the director of the Solid Waste Management Authority, about them just purchasing it from us to get it off of our books, um, and we've gone and done a comparison of, of our existing grinder and some used values that we found out there on the marketplace, um, and have determined that $85,000 is an appropriate value for this to be sold to them. The city bought it a number of years ago, and we, as we discontinued use of it, we allowed them to use it. Um, there are some repairs that need to be made to it, so my recommendation is that you authorize me to negotiate the sale at $85,000 less whatever cost it is to repair, which our shop is estimating is going to be just over $20,000.
Okay. Uh, we discussed the grinding situation and why the city's not able to use it anymore at pre-council. Any questions for our staff at this time? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Smith. Do we have a sec? We have a second from Councilman Mascara. This is authorize the city manager to sell the used city of Dublin grinder to the Solid Waste Management Authority under the terms that he outlined to us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. That passes. That's our last action item, and it's now time for citizens' comments. Are there any citizens who would like to address council at this time?
Good evening, everyone. I am Ray Blutworth. I would like for you to take another look at Pinehurst Court and Pinehurst, because we have a lot of speeding that's going on in that area, and I remember when they placed a little speeding thing down, I think it was there for two days. You should have a couple of police reports on foul for being called for speeding. Also, on Claxton Dairy Road, as I walked the road right before you get to the bridge, it's a dangerous spot there. I'm asking you all to put a railing over there. It's very deep and unsafe. Also, the South Side is doing a feed the kid program at the gym. You all are taking over July 1st for my understanding, and we would like to continue to do the feeding program throughout July. I mean, is y'all switching over with the gym being involved? The gym would also be involved. We, we're doing a feeding program there, Monday through Friday. I have a paper, I forgot to get it. But we would like to continue throughout July. The first week of July, it'll be a freeze in it because they'll be shut down for that week, but we'll continue till the last day, if that's okay with you all. But I would real like for you all to do another evaluation on my street, Pinehurst Court, because changing the speed is not going to stop them from speeding and drag racing. If you go around the Colder Shat, you'll see where somebody was burning their tires and just turning, turning, turning up there. And, um, please take care of that issue on Pinehurst, I mean, Claxton Dairy Road. It is very dangerous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments, and just for our clarification, the recommendations based on the traffic study data was to place two speed cushions on Pinehurst Drive.
It's going to be two.
Two speed cushions on Pinehurst Drive.
I live on Court. It's on Court.
Reduce the speed limit.
The, the speed limit on Pinehurst Court will be reduced to 25 miles per hour.
I mean, they speed.
Okay. I'm just providing information in response to your comments, so thank you for that.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed Amana equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands, and with the purchase of a new Amana, offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff at Allen's Heating and Cooling. You're a Amana dealer. Amana lasts and lasts and lasts.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've grown to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future. That's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter. Member FDIC.
All right. Any other citizens' comments this evening or this afternoon? If there are no other citizens' comments, we'll move to staff comments. Mr. Daniels, Mr. Miss Bradshaw, Mr. Groover, city attorney. Any comments this evening, this afternoon? Uh, C. Clerk Heather Browning, any comments? All right. Mr. Brown, any comments this afternoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just thank you, everybody, for being here. Uh, it's summertime, y'all, uh, been extremely hot. Stay cool when you can, and, uh, everybody have safe travels to Savannah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Madlock. Echo what Mr. Brown said. Thank everyone for coming out. I'll be scheduled to come see us, and, uh, thank you for the citizen comment and concern, and they see we are doing things in the community to improve it and to make it safer. So, um, thank you, Mayor and Council for that, and, uh, everyone be safe.
All right. Thank you for those comments, Councilman. Councilman Godfrey?
I just want to say thank you all for coming out and for everybody that's traveling to be safe. be safe. I'm praying for everybody, because we have all mayors and council members and staff coming from all over the state of Georgia to go to Savannah. And I know Savannah has a lot of 18-wheelers on that road. So I'm really praying for all of us and all of those that are traveling. And I just want you all to be safe. Take care.
All right, thank you for those comments, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby.
I'm excited to see everybody here. And also, we've been working on this parks plan for a very, very long time. And so it's, it's an exciting day that we can see the maintenance of our parks come back under the city's direction and leadership. I'm excited about that and excited to see the, the changes and the upgrades that you're going to see in your own local park in your neighborhood. So thankful to the engineering department and Tara Bradshaw and her department on the project Slow Zone and seeing actual movement. Neighborhoods are the core of our community, and so we're so thankful for that. I'm excited to see Linda Berry here and want to encourage everybody to get out to the market on Madison every Saturday and also to buy your tickets now for the Music Man coming up in July. So thank y'all for being here.
All right, thank you for those comments. Councilman Smith.
No comments today.
All right, thank you. Councilman Mascara.
No comment.
Mr. Powell.
One thing I do need to mention that I neglected to mention in pre-council is next week, Pritchett Park will get playground equipment starting to be delivered, and they will begin the installation of that. That's very exciting for that community in our town. And the playground equipment for Hillburn Park is scheduled to be sometime in July. We don't have a firm date on that yet, but as soon as we do, we'll pass that information on to council.
Yes, forgot to mention that Monday at our GMA conference, we'll have our district meeting, District Nine meeting, and our very own city manager, Josh Powell, will be a panelist on that, at that meeting. So ones that's there, come out and see him on the panel at, at, at that district meeting talking about our city.
All right, that's great. Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited, just like you, everybody is, about our neighborhood parks. And it's great news that the equipment's going to be delivered at Pritchett Park, followed by Hillburn Park. I know that we're working on the landscaping plan and finalizing the playground equipment for Stubbs Park, as well as Springdale Park. We're also working on a nature trail at Springdale Park with a pond, which will serve as both a detention pond to help some of the stormwater runoff that has, in the past, affected Westchester Drive. So we're going to hopefully handle two things at one time. One will handle the stormwater runoff and help Westchester Drive, but then we'll also provide a, a natural area that should be beautiful, and maybe even we can have some fishing out there in a nature trail behind Springdale Park. So very excited that that's in the works and should be coming relatively soon. And then we have other items that are happening with our parks, include the resurfacing that's going on at, of the old tennis courts at Middle Georgia State University. Those are being converted to pickleball courts. And then, of course, the new area at Hillburn Park where we're investing a lot of improvements there.
I had a question from a concerned citizen about the road by the O'Conne Gym between the football field and the baseball fields. Are we still considering cutting that road off and making it just one open?
Yes, that's what the concept calls for.
That's ultimately y'all's decision at the end of the day, and we can cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, as while we're talking about it, all the improvements to our neighborhood parks, the renovation work on O'Conne Gym, do we have a start date for that?
Anticipating, we start October.
October?
First of October.
Okay, great.
We'll update you if that changes.
All right, terrific. All right, so that's a, that's a lot of good news for our neighborhood parks. Very excited about that. I want to thank council for coming in early to handle this council meeting and wish all, all of you a safe trip to Savannah. This meeting is now adjourned.